What is... I just saw this. Don't worry about that.
What's your question?
Do you have some to say?
I will, I will, I will read them in. They were available.
Okay, Timothy.
Five oh two.
I don't bite. I said I don't bite. I just look like it sometimes.
Thank you. And Timothy.
Oh, no, nope. Not at all. No, yeah, that's fine. Oh, no, that's no problem. There you go.
This special meeting of the Reed City City Council is called by order. Amanda, roll call please.
Charles Lupo.
Here.
James Andelore. Tucker Giles.
Here.
Roger Minor.
Here.
Nate Bailey.
Here.
Brad Nixon.
Here.
Nicole Woodside.
Here.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Though it was not officially on the agenda, we are going to open this meeting with public comment. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. If you have any words that you would like to share, please come up to the podium and state your name and address. You will have three minutes to share your views with council and then, please, you know, go back to your seat. We ask everybody to stay cordial and respectful of everybody during this time and keep everything civil. So the floor for public comment is open. Before we invite somebody to the podium though, I will read a few letters that we received into public record. Probably we do.
Do we need to approve the agenda?
Okay.
With the addition of public comment.
Okay. You want to make that motion?
I think she just did.
Okay.
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. First letter received. Hello. I own the Tiki Hut Farm Market in Chase. It has come to my attention that a lot of people want to see Mary Galmanek removed from the Wednesday Farm Market in Reed City. I'm writing in her behalf. I don't believe there would be a market in Reed City if it were not for Mary. As you know, many markets have been tried in Reed City and have failed. It takes a very passionate and dedicated person to make a successful market and Mary is probably one of the most passionate and dedicated people I know. Mary also does so much good for the surrounding communities. Her message really is of love, not hate. I truly believe her words got misinterpreted on the internet. As a farmer and owner of my own market, I know Mary's work is important. Removing her would not just hurt her, but our community as a whole. Sincerely, Paul Avery. My name is Irene Warner and I live at eighteen one nine seven Stonehouse Road in Hursey. I would like to publicly voice my support for Mary Galmanek, Emily Miller, and the Reed City and Cadillac Farmers Markets. I have been a vendor at both markets since two thousand twenty-four and have only had positive interactions with both of them and my family has benefited from the revenue of my sales at the markets. Mary and Emily are kind, generous, fair, and honest and deserve to have a place in the community. Mary and Emily deserve honor and respect for their hard work, faithfulness, and generous contributions that they give to our community. To close down the market would not only harm them and be a stain on our town, but would also cause hardship for all of the vendors who work hard and show up every week to earn a living and provide for the families. The market also provides a great place for the community to socialize in a positive environment and obtain fresh produce and other goods grown and produced by the locals. What a waste it would be, what a waste it would be shut this down. We need it. Please keep the market in support and the people making it happen. Thank you for your consideration, Irene Warner. Hi, Rich. Aaron Campbell here, writing in response to the special meeting that is happening today as I will not be able to attend. First of all, I will say that I have been a vendor and shopper at both Reed City and Cadillac Markets. I have been treated with and have seen nothing but professional behavior from the market coordinators. I think the market has done positive things for both communities and should continue to do so. Second off, I would like to state that what I saw Friday at the market that I was a vendor at was more like bullying and intimidation of Mary and not a protest of the market. Although I believe personal opinions posted in public can lead to negative consequences, a person has a right to speak them and post them. I don't believe that it's, that it's only good enough for me and not for thee, which is what I believe the people against Mary seem to want. And that is after having discussions with some of these people on Friday. Some of this dialogue by the head of the protest to me was that he was trying to change the mindset of people. I tried to remind him that people have differing opinions and that just because they aren't the same as his doesn't make either less valid. When the argument is about free speech, it works both ways. It seems that the people against Mary and the market are only for free speech if it agrees with their opinions. Third of all, trying to remove someone from a non-elected position because a group disagrees with that person's opinion, to me seems very wrong. If a person runs a business and people don't agree with them, those people need to make choices on what businesses they will support. For example, if I don't agree with the gentleman that was leading the protest Friday, I can choose to not do business with his construction company, but I don't believe I should be able to force a city meeting or the like and have him removed as the owner-operator of his business. Anyway, I hope the market stays. I don't believe the hateful comments and actions toward Mary or the market are positive for the community. I hope you will take this into consideration as this event unfolds and hopefully gets resolved quickly and justly. I would like to remain anonymous. If you use my examples or opinions, thanks, take care. Aaron Campbell. Sorry. Will you, will you send a letter? Did he? Okay. He was giving me to me to read first time I saw it.
Thank you.
Okay. I am reaching out to you about the downtown market meeting I am able to attend this afternoon. As a shopper and as a vendor, I believe the market has done nothing but good for our community. It gives small business and hobbyists the opportunity to network and offer their products. It provides a shopper with a safe, welcoming environment to browse. It truly makes our small town feel like a community. I would hate to see such an asset be discontinued or shut down. The matter that this town meeting has been called for is not the market. It is bullying and harassment against someone. We all have the right to an opinion and to disagree. However, we do not have the right to harassment, demeaning, threaten, or exclude. I believe the downtown market should stay and continue to thrive. Thank you for your time, Tracy Worth. Good morning. I apologize in advance. I know that I am missing a few members on this email chain. These were the only ones that I was able to find listed on the city website. Please feel free to distribute this email as needed. First, I would like to thank... First, I would like to thank you all for your time and for allowing us citizens the ability to voice our concerns. I am writing you all in regards to Mary Galmanek and the Farmers Market. Unfortunately, I cannot attend today's meeting regarding this issue. However, I wanted to make sure that my opinion was still stated as I am a resident of Osceola County and frequently attend the markets. I would like to add that for me, this has nothing to do with personal beliefs and everything to do with the vile nature of her statements. These words spread far beyond the original post where she describes how Charlie Kirk chose his fate. After knowing people were upset by this, she continued to say that she would not apologize for her statement and began antagonizing people in the comments. As a professional, it would have been far more appropriate to not post anything than to post in celebration that a father and husband was publicly and brutally murdered. Whether it was, it was a personal platform for her or not, it was still on the internet for everyone to see. I find it appalling that she publicly, that she was publicly in support of Charlie Kirk's assassination. While I completely stand by the right of freedom of speech, I firmly believe that there are consequences, consequences for such hateful and harmful statements when you are representing a community. I would like to add that I firmly believe that anyone in support of such actions should never be in a position of power and certainly should not be able to speak for the community as many of us do not share these beliefs and find these statements horrendous. In addition, I would like to add that I will unfortunately no longer be attending the markets if Mary is still in charge. It saddens me that it has come to this, however, I cannot support a person who is so vile and incapable of compassion. As a Christian and a person who genuinely cares for other human beings, I cannot support such a hateful person. I am sure that many of the vendors did not share the celebratory nature of the public assassination as Mary did and it truly saddens me to know that their business may suffer due to Mary's actions. I truly hope that you will consider this in making your decisions so these hard-working farmers and craft people do not have to be affected due to her inconsiderate actions. Thank you again for your time and consideration, Jaden Draper. I just wanted to express my deep appreciation for having a Farmers Market in my small hometown. It has brought a sense of community to our small area. It has given my children activities free of cost within our community. It's been amazing to see vendors' faces week after week and buy fresh produce. I have friends with allergies who are able to get allergen-free foods in our small community. I'm not condoning Mary's words, but I also feel that stopping a market in which has served our community so greatly is only going to hurt our farmers and families. That hate has to stop. Fueling hate with more hate does nothing. If everyone could show a bit more love, grace, and empathy, our community would benefit. Thank you for all you do, Julianne Jones. So with that, those are the letters received. And we will now invite people to come forth and address council.
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Emily Miller and I run the Reed City Farmers Market with Mary Galmanek. We are fifty-fifty owners of this business and our farm. We have been working together for five plus years now and are truly passionate about the work that we do. This is only our second year in Reed City, but we have been running the Cadillac Farmers Market for five plus years. The reason we started the Reed City Market is because I saw, sorry, I don't know, what a positive impact the one in Cadillac has had on the community from helping small businesses and local farmers to creating a gathering place and a place for community to come together. I wanted that for my hometown of Reed City. Both Mary and I have worked very hard to create and grow this market. We don't just work the market one day a week for a few hours a couple months out of the year. We work year-round, plan events, figure out community programs like EBT, Senior Fresh, Produce Connections, all the things. We figure out how we can support our vendors and advertise better to help them grow their businesses, figure out funding for free children's activities like bike rodeo, storytime, flowers, all the things. And then we're also starting up educational classes to help people learn how to preserve their own food, store your own garden, anything people have been interested in asking us for help with. We would not have the market in this town today if it wasn't for Mary's part in creating it. It may have been my dream or wish, but she's played a vital role in helping it come true. I asked today that you can all see past the argument Kate on Facebook and really reflect back on what this market has been for the people in this community and how it has made a difference for our vendors, our downtown, and our shoppers who now have access to healthy local food. I for one am proud to be a part of the market and the impact it's made and hope to continue to make it bigger and better every year moving forward. We have kept all political views off of our business pages and out of the market and will continue to keep it that way.
Hi, my name's Kathy Feig. I live at three fifteen South Sears Street. First of all, Mary made absolutely no comments on either the Cadillac or the Reed City Farmers Market Facebook pages. All of these comments were outside those two venues. I have not looked at every post. I haven't tried to find every post, but I did not find anything that was inflammatory, as was in that last letter written. I never saw her celebrate Charlie Kirk's death. What she did say was that he was a dangerous man. She pointed out that he said a few gun deaths were to be expected and accepted to have the right to bear arms. I'm sorry that he became one of those statistics. He also despised the term empathy, so don't expect those that don't agree with his views to be empathetic towards him. I despise the fact that he was gunned down. This, this violence has got to stop. But I do not mourn the man. I've read too many things that just shake my core beliefs about good human beings. Mary has a right to her opinion. The only ones that cross the line here are the people that dragged this issue onto the market pages. And Trevor, I think you crossed the line. You went on Facebook to rally the troops for this meeting. So I took a look at your Facebook page. I find it interesting that as an elected official, you were saying there was election fraud in two thousand twenty-one. Those claims have been thoroughly debunked, but I didn't see a retraction. You hosted a podcast titled How Should a Christian Vote? Is there no longer a separation between church and state? You call the Black Lives Matter movement a racist organization. You deny climate change, COVID, and you deny the fact that the assault on the Capitol on January sixth was a riot, even though many of those present were charged and convicted. I personally find all of these statements offensive. And I would never, ever ask you to step down from city council because you have a right to those opinions. You have a right to state them and you have never put them on city pages. I wish you would extend that same courtesy to Mary. I've attended a lot of contentious council meetings where I admired your ability to see both sides of an issue and cut through the bluster and help us find a compromise. Please bring those skills you bear here. Let this play out, folks. If all the vendors quit, fine. If everyone boycotts the market, fine. Then we have a problem. But I see this as a clear-cut First Amendment issue. Mary is being told she does not have the right to hold her opinions. I really hope the council takes absolutely no action on this matter other than apologizing to Mary for holding this kangaroo court to be so weak. Thank you.
I would, I would like to state, Kathy, and we should apologize in advance. I'm keeping time and I know Mayor Myers is keeping time and if someone speaks again, I'll like, I'll hold up ten fingers against those ten seconds left. Should have let you know that so you could have ended appropriately. So I apologize.
Is there anybody else who would like to make a public statement?
Will there be a public comment at the end of the meeting also?
No.
My name is Teresa Lovett and I live at three twenty-eight West Church Avenue. I don't think anybody here in this room would say that having the Farmers Market for Reed City isn't a good thing. It's a great thing. It brings people together. It allows vendors to show their goods. But calling this meeting isn't about, isn't about the Farmers Market. It's about one person's personal opinion and how it got blown out of hand by someone. And now we're here tonight to try to stand up for Mary. She needs her help because this is not fair to her. I mean, if you have a personal opinion on your Facebook, I'm not going to say that you need to get rid of your job or you need to quit being a minister or whatever you are. I mean, it's just not fair to Mary. What you have done tonight is inflammatory. And that's all I have to say.
I'll say something. My name is Nadine Storavia. I live at two three four West Lawson here in Reed City. I own Fur Babies Pet Care and I am not everybody's cup of tea. I know that I say a lot of stuff all the time that ends up with my foot being in my mouth. I have many people who still come and support me. As long as I am a good person, I treat my dogs well, and I do the best I can for my community. My clients, my people, my community are still going to show up and service my door. Okay, I do not agree with what Mary said. I've known Mary for many years from a distance and I've always admired her ability to support our community, to be a volunteer. Our volunteers are our greatest assets to the community. People willing to just give up time to make sure Reed City flourishes. So I love that Mary and Emma have bent over backwards to support the community. I was shocked seeing the words come out of Mary, so much so that I went to her personal page to verify that she didn't speak these words. So I'm not saying take away the Farmers Market. I'm not saying Mary step down. That's my personal opinion that isn't relevant to what's going on today. I think that Mary had a right to use her free speech. Charlie's free speech cost him his life. If Mary chooses to make fun of or not make fun of whatever your viewpoint is of the words she did, I personally don't agree with it. Am I going to stop going to the Farmers Market? Probably not. Okay, there's many, many people in this community that we support that go to the vendors market. For somebody who absolutely does not agree with what Mary said, I will still probably continue to service the Farmers Market because of the vendors sitting there, because of all of Emma's hard work, because of Mary's hard work that got this to the community. But I a hundred percent do not support what Mary said and if she chooses to exercise her free voice, that's her choice. There's nothing that we can do about it but choose to either come or not come. I think the Reed City Market can continue and those who have free will will choose whether or not they want to service the place or not. That's my opinion.
Hi, everyone. I, I kind of follow along the same line as Kathy. Nadine. I don't know how I feel about terminating the Farmers Market. I do have people who use that for their living too, like Annel and I love her. But I think, I am thankful that we are having this discussion. Good job, Reed City. Because this is inflammatory talk. When I get a message from my younger crowd, daughter, and other people are sending me messages saying, this is what was said. When you are celebrating someone's death, I, I mean, I just, that, that is free speech and then Charlie died for his free, free speech. And like Nadine said, we can go or not go. So I'm not advocating for the end of the Farmers Market. However, I think this is a valuable conversation and I'm glad we're all here. I'm glad that we're able to say this, that, you know, when Charlie Kirk, when I got home, I listened to a lot of Charlie Kirk. I am Charlie Kirk in many ways. What he believes is a lot of the things that I believe. When he, yes, absolutely. It is what I believe. I am a Christian.
Please refrain.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to agree with me and I am freely speaking. Okay, I know Kathy, you and I. All right, so I just want to say that is a great conversation to have. I'm glad we're having it. And we can agree that we're not going to always agree on the ideas. Charles and I have had conversations. We don't agree on all our ideas. But you know what? We can talk about them. I would never celebrate that man's death. I would never. If someone hurt Charles because he did something on the city council or anything, beat him up, hurt him, I would be the first one to say, no, you do not have a right to do that. I don't care what he said, you do not have a right to kill someone. Violence and killing is wrong and we can say that and we will have a free choice to go or not go to this Farmers Market. And I thank you guys for having this meeting.
Jackie Youngs, three oh two North Chestnut Street, Reed City, Michigan. First off, I don't understand why you'll keep saying that the Farmers Market would close down. Somebody else can run it. I have nothing against her. Don't get me wrong. I'm just wondering how come it's either yes or no with Farmers Market's concerned. And second, as for the other lady, I totally stand behind most things that Charlie Kirk said. I have read numerous, numerous postings on Facebook from different people, professional people, whatever. Feeling bad about it, other ones crazy. No one, absolutely no one should have the right to praise an assassination. He did not fall over from a heart attack. He didn't get run over by a bus. He was shot. How would you feel if, let's use our last president, President Biden. If somebody shot him and all the Republicans started saying it's the best thing that ever happened to that man, there'd be riots in the street.
there'd be riots in the streets. One thing about Charlie Kirk's death, you did not see a riot. You didn't see a building burned down. But yet there's people out there that want to celebrate the assassination of a husband, a father, a son. And I don't care what free speech is. Yes, they can have free speech. It's just not a Christian thing to do. Thank you.
Carolyn Rupert, Two Mile Road, Reed City. I'm here in support of a daughter, Emily Miller, and the Reed City Farmers Market. Two years ago, I mean, I was been doing the Cadillac Farmers Market with Mary for, like you said, five-plus years. But two years ago, she came to me, and we were sitting there, and she goes, "I really want to do something for Reed City. I want that community. I want to start the farmers market." And being in Reed City 30-some-plus years, I knew who to put her in touch with, and we put together the farmers market. The farmers market's a good thing. I've seen the kids there, the bike rodeo, the sheriff coming, the fire department. It's a really good thing. I have a busy little bubble that I'm very busy, and then I can honestly say that I did not know who Charlie Kirk was. And I really do not believe that Mary meant anything by what she said. I don't think she is celebrating anything. I'm honestly going to agree with her opinion, but that's my point on that. But I know that Mary has helped Emily in order to put on the market because Emily probably could have done it by herself. She needed the help. She's really young. But it's a good thing. They are tremendous people that only want to do what's good for this community.
Hi, my name is Annel Schneider. I'm a vendor at the Farmer Market in Cadillac and vendor in Reed City. And I'm doing a motion about what happened.